How are you sir? I am attending the National Assembly's public hearing on social media bill. I was invited, so I have 10 people with me. And they have, two of them are, some of them in the car, there's another black car.
This is black car?
Is that a...
No, 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 46.
306. It must be a 306, maybe traffic got off. So that's where we're going. Thank you very much. How's your day going so far? Very good. The criminals running our country. They even have the audacity to put their big signboards everywhere. What are they doing, rather than collecting salaries? Look at that, this is not supposed to even be in front of National Assembly. Since the assumption of the leadership of the Knight Assembly, your positive duties have been defined by commitments, the common man, adherence to the democratic... It's a massive complex, you know? Massive complex run by non-complex people. Or people who don't understand complexity. Otherwise, why do you need a social media bill? In 2020, you know? And I heard the senator who introduced it out of all the local governments in his state, Niger state. Was it, you know? I think the one that introduced this one is from Kaduna, there's one from Niger. Niger, I think. If you're hearing me, do you know the senator who introduced this? I don't know him. I don't know the senators. They said most of the local governments in his state are under the control of bandits. That one doesn't concern him. It is what is happening on Twitter and Facebook that he's interested in. With all the money they get, they spend it into like transportation from the gate to...
Yeah, like a shuttle bus.
People are begging for free rides now. They have like a parking space. How are you sir? We are attending the public hearing here for the social media bill.
Welcome sir.
Thank you.
You are unstoppable.
Okay, where do we go?
Is it, which one?
It says it's Route 22, Senate.
I think it's Senate.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Is it straight?
If you enter, go by a left. You see, it's written.
Okay, so go straight then left.
Don't enter this gate.
Okay.
Go by a left.
Our people, there's a 306 coming, they are part of my group. Black car, please. Let them come. Appreciate you. How's it going guys? Good morning! Good morning! Good morning! Good morning! Good morning! Good morning! They said you go left, that's what he said. Because I didn't download it, it sounds overrap. And then the Senate is just... There's a massive National Assembly. Complex. It's the hideout of some of the worst thieves in Nigeria, you know? It's their national hideout. Former governors. Okay, this one they said it's principal officers. Go right, I think. I've never been here before. They send people like us to jail, not to National Assembly. But where's the entrance to the Senate? Because they said that one is for principal officers, they keep going straight.
Should I go through that?
Go straight now, what are they saying? And what you should do is drop us first. I think at the entrance, and then we figure out how to... You figure out, because we are running, I think it will only due to traffic. What is the entrance, where is the official entrance in the Senate, that's the question. Ask that guy, ask, no, no, ask the... Why, you should have asked the brusque kid guy. We can't just make any assumptions, because we are running late.
No, can you just pull back?
Push pull back. After that.
Go turn back a little bit.
Okay.
We should have gone right instead of left.
Just turn right and go right. If you enter this place, you won't be able to get out on time now. Is that a one-way place? Because this is a parking lot. The entrance of the Senate, where is it? You don't pass up. Can we go through this place? That's what I was saying, go back, go back. Yes. Just go back, go back, go back.
Should hold that up.
Okay, let's line up. Can we just get off here, you can't find back. Let's get off here. Is that the 022? Where is the 022?
You can use this, you can use staircase. The staircase after, behind this.
Okay. Where is 022, the 022 place?
Now we're going.
The hearing.
Thank you sir.
So go, you keep going straight?
Sorry? Yeah, I'm going ahead.
Okay, okay. This is all...
No, this street is dead.
How are you sir?
Waiting for you.
Okay.
We have some party to show you.
Thank you. Not a bad place.
I always party there.
How did you get out?
I was at the one near the meeting. I was, you're awesome, connecting us.
Thank you so much. Okay, did you don't come?
We welcome the senior senators, we welcome the Chairman, Senate Committee on Judiciary, Human Rights and Legal Matters. Distinguished Senator Michael Okwame Bamedele. We welcome. We welcome distinguished Senator, Mr. Ali Musa. Welcome here. We welcome distinguished Senator, please have a watch. We welcome you as well.
No problem. Sorry? Eh? I'm staying now.
Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, can we please settle down? And we also welcome our friend and brother, Omu Elese Shorore. Thank you for coming. Omu Elese Shorore is the former presidential aspect, we welcome you.
Come here.
Last read the election. Our blog that they do. We're supposed to be seated, you know? Before they accuse those of contempt of the Senate. Sorry, nice to meet you. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. So, so, so.
First, don't take a song. Just pause. Just for you to stand. Imagine.
Listen, we have your attention in a short while from now. For us better to pitch up these events in our system. But they are clean with all the sacrifices. To please grab yourself a seat. We want this place to be a bit more organized than it is right now.
Where is the G?
To man can a request that please take your seats.
Now who has the...
Please take your seats, if there are no seats, please would rather than stand somewhere up ahead. Please can we settle down, please?
Looking for the senator who introduced the bill. So I can tell him to... So I can tell him to... Let's be dry, it's been like six days.
Again, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. I'd like that we please settle down. As we get ready to kick start this. I'm guessing some year that the number three citizen of the Federal Republic of Nigeria gets upon a public hearing.
Do you have up to two seats? Alright, if you can.
Can we please settle down?
Nice to meet you. We were supposed to be here, that was our expectation.
Please settle down, please, I beg of you. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, distinguished senators. Can we please... Can we please welcome the number three citizen of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. President of the Senate, Chairman of the National Assembly.
They say welcome, but they just stand up.
Please must remain standing. Can we please have the national anthem?
Stand up for him.
Thank you very much. Please be seated. As you took your seats. And inviting the Chairman Senate Committee on Judiciary, Human Rights and Legal Matters. To please give us the opening prayer, distinguished Senator Michael Okwame Bamedele.
When the city is called to order. Almighty God, ruler of heaven and earth. We beset thee to inspire and guide all our counsel and actions. So that we may always walk in the path of justice, love and charity to one another. Help us with thy grace to do only those things that will promote the unity, happiness and prosperity of Nigeria. Amen.
Having done this opening prayer. I find it very pertinent at this juncture to establish the protocol to get these events underway. Your Excellency, distinguished Senator Dr. Ahmed O'Brien Lawan, C O N. President of the Senate and Chairman of the National Assembly. Who also doubles as a guest of honor of his public here. The minority leader of the Senate. Deputy leader. Deputy majority leader of the Senate. Chairman, Senate Committee on Judiciary, Human Rights and Legal Matters. Distinguished Senator Michael Okwame Bamedele. Members of the Committee on Judiciary, Human Rights and Legal Matters. Distinguished senators. Representatives of the Chief of Armed Staff. Heads of agencies, both public and private. Members of civil society organizations. Human rights activists present. Members of the fourth estate of the realm. Invited guests, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome you this morning to this very important public hearing. Convened by the Senate Committee on Judiciary, Human Rights and Legal Matters. This public hearing is a protection from internet falsehoods, manipulations and order-related matters bill 2019. Welcoming you to this event. And to formally welcome, mostly welcome all of you most formally to this event. It is my honour and privilege to then invite very quickly the Senate Committee Chairman on Judiciary, Human Rights and Legal Matters. Distinguished Senator Michael Okwame Bamedele. To please approach the podium for his welcoming marks. Distinguished Senator Michael Okwayemi Bamedele to please approach the podium for his welcoming act. Please thus welcome him with a resounding applause.
His Excellency, President of the Senate of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. Senator Ahmed Lawan, C O N. Principal Officers of the Ninth Senate. Other distinguished colleagues who are here. Uh, including the sponsor of this bill. Distinguished Senator Mohamed Sam Moussa, representing Nigerians. Very, very distinguished, eminent and highly esteemed Nigerians. Who are here as stakeholders from various walks of life. Including the military, civil society organizations, the media and other very key, uh, stakeholding, uh, platforms. Really, really, thank you for the presence. And I say it is with great delight and a deep sense of responsibility. That I, on behalf of members of the Senate Committee on Judiciary, Human Rights and Legal Matters. Warmly welcome our special guest of honor. His Excellency Senator Ahmed Ibrahim Lawan, Ph.D., C O N. The President of the Senate to the occasion of the public hearing on the protection from internet falsehoods and manipulations. And other related matters bill 2019. I am particularly happy that in spite of other pressing official engagements. Mr. President has found time to attend and declare this public hearing over. Mr. President, sir, you are most welcome and sincerely appreciate your esteemed presence. I also want to profoundly thank distinguished principal officers of the Senate. Our very respected stakeholders, members of the public and ladies and gentlemen of the press. Without whose presence here today, these proceedings will be incomplete. Permit me to also recognize and appreciate Mr. Clemente Wankor. The Director of Policy and Legal Advocacy Center, Plaid. For the tremendous support, collaboration and engagement with the committee on several legislative fronts. You are all welcome and we sincerely thank you for honoring and reputation to grace this occasion. Mr. President, distinguished colleagues, ladies and gentlemen. Let me make it clear from the onset. That the National Assembly as a better and traditional custodian of constitutional democracy. Charged with the sole responsibility of lawmaking. Will not share in its mandate of making laws that will be acceptable and be able to stand the test of time. For the advancement of our dear country, Nigeria. This is a legislative mandate and by extension, a contractual covenant with the people of Nigeria. Which is encapsulated in section four, subsection two of the Constitution of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, nineteen ninety-nine as amended. Whereby the legislature is enjoined to make laws for the peace, order and good government of the Federation or any part thereof. In our view, this is the hallmark of legislative functions and is not only sacrosanct and non-negotiable. It is performed through several mechanisms such as bills, motions, representation, public hearings, oversight and other legislative communications. And all information. It should be noted that it is through the instrumentality of public hearings that legislative committees, among other things. Gather information and receive valuable contributions from the members of the public that enrich and enhance the legislative processes. Mr. President, distinguished colleagues, we are aware of the interest generated by this bill. When it was first introduced in the Senate. Which has continued to take the center stage and dominate public discourse. In a nutshell, the protection from internet falsehoods and manipulations and other related matters bill 2019. Which was dubbed the social media bill. Seeks to, among other things, make provision for a legal framework. To regulate and control the use of internet and its intermediaries in the transmission of information in Nigeria. The objectives of the proposed legislation as stated are as follows. A, to prevent the transmission of false statements, declaration of facts in Nigeria and to enable, and to enable measures to be taken to counter the effects of such transmission. B, to suppress the financing, promotion and other support of online locations. That repeatedly transmit false statements and declaration of facts in Nigeria. C, to enable measures to be taken to detect, control and safeguard against coordinated inauthentic behavior. And other misuses of online accounts and bots. D, to enable measures to be taken to enhance disclosure of information concerning paid content. Directed towards a political end and E, to sanction offenders. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, it is as a result of the interest that the bill has generated. That the committee, after wide consultations and with the leadership, with the support and approval of the leadership of this Ninth Senate, under the watch of His Excellency Senator Dr. Ahmed Lawan. Result to conduct this public hearing, to collect the views of stakeholders. Undoubtedly, this legislative process is painstaking and the committees, as the engine room of the legislature. Treat it with the greatest seriousness and due regard. In this connection, it should be stated in mistaken terms. That views of stakeholders matter to us because without your participation, this process will be incomplete. And will not be intermed with our promises to Nigerians as reflected in the legislative agenda of the Ninth Senate. This, of course, is the beauty of democracy. And these collaborative efforts that we have embarked upon will enhance seamless and smooth negotiations on this proposed legislation. The inclusivity in the legislative process is further reinforced by...